I hope you don't want to throw my vote with you. Have troubles?
No. But ain't y'all made it done?
Let me see, you see that?
Ain't that no way police said prior?
I just collect.
Benel?
Present.
Gantz?
Yes ma'am.
Honeycutt? Kirkpatrick?
Yes ma'am.
Lowry?
Here.
Neal? Norris?
Here.
Trig? Witcher?
Motion by Benel.
We have a motion by Councilmember Benel. Second, uh, Councilmember Patrick Collins and Patrick. Say, may I?
Aye.
Those opposed or not, as you ask. First thing on the agenda, we have department here of the presentations. We have another government three and nine. First one is business license on the pressure tax, ABC alcohol area control. And we have the official writer, Dr. Clark, and Brandon Turner here to give all the update and answer questions.
Thank you, Mayor. All of you should have the information sheet. I hope you've got it. It should have been passed out before the meeting tonight. Just gonna take a minute to go over that briefly, give you some of the information, just a small rundown of the things we're doing in the Occupational Tax Department type and the amount of revenues that we're collecting for the city. Feel free at any point, if you have any questions, to stop me and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer the best I can. So, the primary job of my department is obviously the collection of revenue from the city. And as you can see from that handout, we're, you know, in addition to the occupational license fees, we're collecting insurance premium taxes, we're collecting the alcohol license fees and the alcohol regulatory fees. We're collecting transient room taxes, tangible taxes and the bank shares. First one I want to touch on tonight is the occupational license fee. It is by far the most significant revenue source that the city has. As of April the fifteenth of this year, we've, we're collecting that occupational tax on about four thousand accounts. It's, my department's going to account for about over thirteen million dollars this fiscal year, which is about seventy-five percent of the budgeted general revenues for the city for the, for the fiscal year. We collect that license fee through two sources, the net profit return and the payroll withholding tax. Payroll withholding tax is, is, it's the largest revenue source for the city. That's the tax that comes out of people's paychecks every week. And we expect to collect around eight and a half million dollars this year on the payroll tax. The net profit license fee return, that's a, that's an income tax return that's filed by the businesses that are operating in the city. City imposes a tax on the profits of these businesses and we, we, we collect those annually and we expect to receive around two million dollars this year in net profit revenue. The next revenue source is the insurance premium tax. That tax is, it is what the name implies. If you're insuring something in the city limits, whether it's your house or your car or boat or any personal belonging, as well as individual health and life insurance policies, you're almost certainly paying an insurance premium tax. Those taxes range from two percent on life and health policies up to five percent on all other types of policies. We're expecting to collect around one point four, one point five million dollars in those insurance premium taxes this year. Next thing we'll look at is the alcohol regulatory fees and the alcohol license fees. The license fees are those flat fees that, that the businesses selling alcohol pay each year. The fees vary based on the type of alcohol license that we issue and we expect revenues from this revenue to be about forty-three thousand dollars. The alcohol regulatory license fee is that five percent tax on, on alcohol sales in the city. Expected revenue from, from the regulatory, from the alcohol regulatory fee is around six hundred thousand dollars this year. And if you, if you, if you take that six hundred thousand and you back it into the gross sales figure, you're looking at around twelve million dollars in alcohol sales in the city limits of Glasgow in a year. As of today, as you can see, we have fifty licensed premises selling alcohol in the city limits. Twenty-two of those are grocery stores and convenience stores, fourteen are restaurants, we have seven bars, five liquor stores, and then we have the two kind of miscellaneous alcohol with Plaza Theater and Willow Oaks. Next item is the transient room tax. That's the three percent that our motels and our bed and breakfasts and our short-term rental entities in the, in the county, the entire county of Barron County. It does not include Cave City, they have their own room tax. But the city collects this tax on behalf of the Glasgow Barron County Tourism Commission. A hundred percent of those funds go to them for their operations. And we currently have twenty-nine entities paying that room tax and we expect to collect around two hundred thousand dollars this year. Next thing is the tangible taxes. That's taxes that public service companies pay. Public service companies are like telecommunications entities, utility entities, transportation, like railroads and that kind of thing. They pay the tax based on their real estate or their tangible property in the city. Typically, they pay those in lieu of the net profit return. And we expect to bring in around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year in those fees. Last thing I've got is the bank shares. We, we, we bill for those annually. That's a tax on the deposits of the banks that are in the city. Expected revenue from that is around a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's all I've got. Be glad to take any questions. Anybody has one?
When we first did the alcohol, we talked about alcohol sales in the city. We talked about the tax related fee, because we can't say that it is a tax.
Right.
One of the things we said was, we expected a maybe increase in alcohol related incidents and more money to be applied to this government and the vehicles personnel and the whole thing that we're discussing. So, we had about at the five-year point, a lot of committees have said at the five-year point, they still kept the license fee, we got rid of the alcohol tax fee on that committee. We plan on, or what do you think about that?
I'm not aware of any that have eliminated that tax. You may be right, I, I just don't know of that. It doesn't matter to me if we eliminate it or not, I'll just, I mean, that's more of the, I guess, a decision for the, the finance committee and, I guess, the finance folks with the city. I'll collect it if, if we're required to collect it, but if you all decide to eliminate it, then it's fine.
So, kind of halfway past the chief, I'm gonna catch you off on the hook here. Has there been an increase in alcohol-related incidents in the city that increased your responses and caused you more over these last five years?
I, I would have to say yes to that, but it's not just alcohol-related, we also have a major drug problem in which they're now trying to separate those two. I can actually work on getting you a number, possibly show the difference between the two, but sure they've gone up, but everything's gone up the last few years with incidents.
May I have one more question, Brandon? Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Brandon, looking out in this next budget, what numbers you looking at, any increase relating to any of the fees that are on here?
You mean as far as?
Payroll, the occupational license fees?
I, I think they'll definitely go up because we're gonna be collecting a full year's worth of the new one point seven five rate. You would like to think that maybe some of the, I think we all understand there's been some employment issues with the restaurant industry and maybe getting people back to work, I don't know, maybe those people, maybe that solves itself, that wouldn't be an increase, but, you know, other than the, the, the full year of the one point seven five, that'll be the biggest.
Okay. And talk to us a little bit, I know we, we signed on with Datamax and how's that program, tell everyone how that program's going.
So, I don't know if people are familiar with Datamax, but that's, that's a third-party vendor that the finance committee, we had some discussions with, with Datamax. They're basically a revenue enhancement company. They, they come in, they have their own methodologies to find businesses that, that maybe aren't as visible, you know, you can't see the truck in the parking lot or, you know, they're selling things to hospitals and clinics that, stuff that we don't see. We've probably, I guess that was seven, eight months ago. It took quite a bit of time for that thing to get rolling. They've probably got inquiries out to about fifty or sixty entities right now. We've heard from a dozen of them that we've actually got money from. Today, we've got about sixty-five hundred dollars and that contract states that Datamax gets half and we get half, so, you know, we've, we've thirty-five hundred dollars for the city. And I, I do expect that to continue to increase as, as those, as they have time to utilize their resources.
What period of the year is it, three years or five?
I think it was three years, Terry. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, thanks Brandon, appreciate your report. Next thing is planning, zoning director, Kevin Maier.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. I went ahead and handed out some of the, just the reports here that, that I've got and put together for you all, so if you guys wanna refer to that, that's fine. As all of you all know, I'm Kevin Maad, I'm the Planning and Zoning Director for Glasgow and Barron County, Cave City and Park City as well as we're a joint city-county planning commission. Our planning commission has thirteen members, five of which are appointed by the city, five of which are appointed by Barron County, and then two from Cave City and one from Glasgow as, or from Park City, excuse me, as a representative. So, what you've got in front of you is a plat development review of five years. This covers both minor and major subdivisions. In our subdivision regulations, which overlay into the city of Glasgow, a major subdivision is six tracks or more from the parent track. So, even if it's a large farm division where there might be ten or twelve large tracks, that's still considered a major subdivision by our subdivision regs. So, as you can see here, over the past five years from 2017 to 2021, I didn't include 2022 up to this date because of, these are full calendar years, so this gives you an idea over the entire year what we do and, and how many plats and, and actual applications that we receive. So, you can see, over those, those five years roughly, our major subdivisions have kind of held steady at that four to eight to ten mark, you know, somewhere around in there. Even with, with what transpired with the pandemic over the last two years there, it really spurred more growth, more division of land. Couple things that can be attributed to that. Number one, I know that there's, you know, bankers in the audience, businessmen and businesswomen in the audience, you guys know this as well, the, the rates have been relatively low, allow people to lend money, people to borrow and, and make purchases. A second attribute to this is the fact that there have been a mass exodus of people from other states in our country that have come to our county specifically over the last two years. That in and of itself has caused people to sell property, divide property where you think there might not be property divided, and they purchased them at relatively high prices, which just rose the, the property values of those areas around there. So, you'll see in 2020, 2021, our total number of lots reviewed was three hundred and seventy-seven, four hundred two total lots in, respectively of those two years. While the number of applications, if you were to add all of those numbers together down at the bottom, your major, minor subdivision, plats and your zone changes that you see above that, it doesn't equal that total applications reviewed because we also have development plans that we review, we also have variances that we review, and we also have cell towers that we review. So, a lot of those aren't applicable here in this situation or this scenario here. But you can see that over the last five years, we've continually kind of steadied and then the last two, two years grown. That's a good thing, it's, it's sustainable growth, it's, it's not something that's out of whack that all of a sudden we have, you know, a, a great deal of lots that have just been sold, a great deal, while those are great things, you have to understand the other side of that coin that comes with that. You get ten to fifteen major subdivisions in a two-year period, how's your infrastructure? Is, is your roadway's gonna be able to handle that all of a sudden? Is your, your, you know, the water electric all of a sudden gonna be able to handle those type of increases? So, we have grown steadily, more so than spiked, which is a good thing. We wanna continue to grow at a steady pace instead of spike and then drop down and then spike again, because those are the hardest things to plan for, hardest things to look forward to in the planning world, because they kind of spot and happen in places that you might not anticipate for them to happen. Obviously, we have a long-range plan and a short-range plan for not only Glasgow but Barron County that we do in the comprehensive plan that's available to everyone. It gives an idea of where our growth happens and where it transpires. So, we have a, a somewhat of an idea, where there's infrastructure, you're gonna see development occur, where there's no infrastructure with sewer or water, it's gonna be difficult for those individuals to, to develop that because they're gonna have to put all that infrastructure in at the beginning of the phase, it's not readily available to them. So, we have a great amount of data and, and a great amount of help from the utility companies that provides that data to us and we're very grateful for that, because it helps us for the citizens that come in to see us make edu, or make educated, uniformed decisions on there. It's not just shooting at the dark, we have a lot of data at our fingertips that can provide for them as well. So, this is just a quick snapshot of what we're doing, what we have, what we've been doing. You'll see zone changes, you know, while four and eight don't sound like a lot of zone changes and then, and larger municipalities, that's not, that's a small number, there's a great amount of work has to go on with those simply because of the state statute requirements. We don't make zone changes, zone changes are solely by the individuals and the citizens that come forward, we don't create anything. So, we're solely at their discretion when they want to rezone their property. And as I've always said, since I've worked here and our predecessor Scott Young has always said, the planning commission is here to help you maximize your property. It's not here to be lords over your property. We can operate in the confines of the regs that we've been given, but we're gonna try to find every way possible feasible to help you maximize your property and growth and development, whatever it might be. So, if you have any questions, obviously, feel free to ask, hopefully I can answer them. Just a couple questions. Yeah. Ken, where do we stay with commercial development? I mean, what's your, this is all residential development? It, it does include commercial development a little bit. Those properties that were divided for commercial development. Now, as far as development process itself, just the applications, we're growing, we're seeing, we've probably had just this year alone, eight developments that's brought, been brought for the planning commission. But what we've seen is whether it's a issue with materials or it's an issue with, with the labor force, while we have approved developments and, and had those meet our regulations, it's taken time for those developments to actually occur, simply because of what's going on in the world right now and just getting those, those, those supplies. We've had a couple developments that's been approved for sixteen months and they just started breaking ground on it, because they just now, for whatever reason, got their stuff together, got their, their employees together or got their supplies or got their lending, whatever it might be. It just now occurred and it just now happened. So, we have a lot of things planned, a lot of things approved, and while they have gotten approved at our level, necessarily hasn't translated into actual seeing that brick and mortar type structures come up yet, but I'm confident that they will. And I'm confident in the areas that they've developed, that we have all the necessary requirements as far as infrastructure. The, the roadway's gonna handle anticipated traffic volumes from it, our water and sewer's readily available, our electric and, and phone lines and, and internet is readily available. So, we're in a prime position to be able to grow. Obviously, there's some entities that's outside of our scope here that are growing and that's gonna be an offshoot for us and we have to recognize that, as, as a planning world, we have to recognize that. You know, while we might not build the John Deere's, we might be building the GPSs for them and we need to be okay with that and that's one way to grow. So, we just need to look at those kind of things. But, yeah, our, our commercial development has, this year has really taken off, though. You're welcome.
I got two questions.
Go ahead.
Can you do a quick breakdown of residential codes R?
Yeah, yeah, so our, our, we have four residential codes, R1 through R4. R1 is our lowest density residential, allows for single and double and duplex type structures. And then our R2 to R4 allows for fourplexes in R2 and R3, but your R4 allows for anything greater than a fourplex. While the R4 was, was wrote for those type of developments that build upward rather than outward, so, you may see a structure that might go four or five stories high and it's got twenty-four units, we can call it a twenty-fourplex as opposed to an eightplex that goes outward more so. So, your R4 development, which we have quite a bit of development in the R4, it's our, it's our highest density residential code and it will provide you all with large, high-intensity residential usage, meaning a lot of vehicles in one spot with a lot of units there. The R1 district is your larger lot subdivisions in Glasgow, the ones that you may see a, a single-family house on an acre or two acres or even three acres. Those are your smaller, I mean, your larger density residential zones. Your R2 and R3, R3 was created specifically for those lots that don't meet any of our rules today, meaning that they may only have five thousand square feet in them, six thousand square feet, and a lot of our older lots in Glasgow, which we all know, a lot of those shotgun lots that were on West Cherry Street or, or somewhere in that area, we have a lot of lots that are just twenty-five feet wide, they may be a hundred foot deep, but they don't get close to meeting what the minimum area there is for a home to be located on it. That R4 zoning was created specifically for those, to help bring them up to a code. It's our smallest lot density residential development that you can have.
So, the ones on Scotty Drat, the new apartments on Scotty Drat?
Yes, sir.
Are fours.
Those are our fours, yes, sir.
So, where is there an R2 complex right there?
Okay, some of the R2 complexes are out in Terrace Estates, out Cleveland Avenue, that you'll see there. A lot of the R2 requirements are off of, of East or West Washington up here, just to the left of it, you've got some of those apartments down below that, it's in an R2 zoning. They may fit fourplexes in there, but there's multiple fourplexes that can be located on those lots as well. So, our R2 and our R1 is the two largest residential zones we have in Glasgow.
Down on Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Main Street, are those all?
Those are all R2, a lot of those are R2 zoning classifications.
For the, give us a quick talk about how you do the zoning, just fast.
Sure. The state statute requires that we have to create a comprehensive plans, future land use map. Those are public hearings, we try to get the public involved to help us understand where development might occur, where they see things that might happen that we don't and aren't aware of. We create that future land use map, which is a projection map only, it's, it's a blueprint, it's a guide, it's not the and-all-be-all gospel, okay? State law says that you gotta meet one of three things. One, it has to be in compliance with that future land use map. So, if it's not in compliance, the burden is on the applicant to prove why their zoning classification that they're proposing is more appropriate than what our zoning classification that we anticipated being. And then, the second thing is, there have to be changes of a physical, social or economic standpoint in the neighborhood that changed that, that we didn't anticipate. Think of a new roadway that's being widened by the state, you know, the state says, hey, Cleveland Avenue's gonna be widened and we're gonna have a turn-in lane and all that, that's a physical and economic change in the neighborhood that we might not have anticipated that was gonna happen. So, those individuals, while they may say, hey, I want a commercial development on that roadway, we had anticipated it being residential. That gives them the ability to prove that, hey, these were changes of a physical or social or economic standpoint in the neighborhood. And the planning commission can take that and say, yes, you're, you're correct, and they could put binding elements on that property, assuming that the, you know, the applicant agrees to those things. And then, when we say the planning commission approves that, that then is forwarded as a recommendation to this body here for two readings, for an ordinance to officially change that classification. So, while we try to make it as easy as possible, it's still about a two-and-a-half month process, three-month process, because of the state statute requiring that I have to notify all adjacent property owners, even across the road, I have to put a sign on the property, I have to put an ad in the newspaper as well, all fourteen days prior to the meeting date, which means I have to have all of that data ahead of me two weeks before that, so I gotta have it basically a month ahead of time. So, you look at it basically three to four month process for that zone change to transpire and that's solely because of the state statutes that we have to meet, that, that part we can't change, just the, the notification process.
You have any questions?
All right, thank you all.
Appreciate you. Next, present, this is the council's electric plan board, Dave, question?
Yeah, I appreciate you having me here tonight. I met several of the council members prior to tonight, but I think I got around to meet the rest of you this evening, so. And my name is Dave Puskala, I'm the, that superintendent of the electric plan board and I gave you all a presentation, a copy of the presentation and we'll just get right into it. and we'll just get right into it. It's fairly short. First page is just the topics I'm going to go over, but we'll move right into the introduction. And again, my name is Dave Puskala. I started with the Electric Plan Board on September 13th, so I've been here seven to eight months now, and graduated from Michigan Technological University, Michigan Tech, with a bachelor's in electrical engineering. My hometown is Iron River, Michigan, which is in the Upper Peninsula. So, if we have any sort of language barrier between Uper and Southern, you know, we'll try to work through it. I might have a little bit of an accent. You guys, I know, don't have any accent, so we'll work through that. I'm married, my wife's name is Carol. We've been married for 32 years. In this past March, we have four kids, three daughters and one son. And our youngest just graduated from high school last year, and she's a freshman at UW Lacrosse this year. So, that somewhat precipitated the move to, or to look for other opportunities and once my youngest daughter was graduated from high school. So, I'm really, again, thank you for being here today. The reception in Glasgow since I got here has been great. Met a lot of wonderful people. Very, very pleased with how I've been received. And yeah, so, thank you. So, getting into the statistics of the EPB, we have 7,559 total electric meters. Of those, 5,733 are residential meters. 1,826 are commercial meters. And we have 4,258 streetlights and security lights. So, we don't really differentiate a whole lot in our numbers between a streetlight that's serving the city and a security light that a private resident might have. But the number of 4,258 includes both types of lights. We have 5,800 broadband customers, and we have 4,223 cable and video customers. The next page is the financial update. The right-hand column is a summary of our audited financials for the last fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. And I believe you have a copy of our audit that was completed a couple of months ago. The left-hand column is our unaudited fiscal year to date through the first three quarters. And as you can see, it pretty well tracks last year. Not a lot of changes. During COVID, we gained a number of broadband customers, and we've lost a few since then. But basically, everything is pretty steady. Next, I just put some quick notes on our electric system upgrades. And in order to keep improving the reliability of our electric system, we regularly change out poles and other equipment just to keep it updated. These numbers are from 2021, just to give you an idea of what we do on a regular basis. These are with no special projects. They're really just maintenance as we see it's needed. We replaced 52 poles. We added 17 new poles, which might be a new customer or other activity. We've added some new transformers, and we've downsized. One of the things that we're making a regular habit of is we're looking at how our three-phase transformers match our commercial loads. And a lot of times, they're oversized. And this was going on, you know, before I, this process was going on before I got here, but I definitely am in favor of it. What happens when you have an oversized transformer is there's just a lot of system losses, and plus you have a capital investment in the field that's really not meeting its full purpose. And so, we'll change out and put a transformer that's correctly sized, bring the other one in into stock, and then use it where it's needed. So, we did 10 of those in 2021, and we're going to continue to do that, especially as the price of transformers increases and the larger transformers do end up getting a little tougher to get. Lead times are getting fairly long on those. So, but we're really in good shape with our inventory. Our Aaron Reese, our warehouse manager, does a great job with keeping us where we need to be, so we're good there. And then we also have been adding switches regularly to the system. So, a switch is a three-phase, it opens all, if you see a typical distribution line, it has three phases in the neutral. A gang-operated switch opens all three phases because you need to open all three at once to not adversely affect a three-phase customer, commercial customer. We added four of those in 2021, and we're going to continue that process because it allows us to sectionalize the system better when there's outages, to bring people back on quicker, and those sorts of things. So, we're, that's a, we're going to, you'll probably see us having added more than four in 2022 when I give next year's update. On the streetlight and security light front, we've converted 492 lights to LED. Of those 4,258 lights that I mentioned earlier, 492 of those in 2021 were converted to LED. And to date, we have 2,881 of those total, 4258 converted to LED, which is about 68%. We'll complete that process sometime in the next couple of years, I would think. But it's just, we're continuing to add those lights. And some, you know, we're going to be converting all of them to LED at some point. Some people like them, some people don't, but they save a lot of energy, and that's just the future. But we try to be sensitive to light placement. The light pattern is different. And so, there's ways we can adjust things if we need to. In broadband, we have been really focusing, especially because of the increase in data demand when COVID hit. We went through a process of engineering, re-engineering, and adding what we call nodes to our system. We added 9,000 feet of fiber optic cable to extend out deeper into our customer base and break down areas that we had into more defined nodes. We started out with eight nodes going into 2021, and by the end of 2021, we had 25. And that, basically, if we had 500 customers on a node, we broke it into five new nodes to try to get down to 100. That was, that's been our goal, is to get it down to 100 or less. And we'll continue that process in 2022 and beyond as well. And the next slide is just a map of what I just described. So, on the left is the eight nodes that we started out with going into 2022. And on the right is, are the 25 nodes that we now have in that same geographic area. And that is pretty much all I have to offer. I will entertain any questions, but these guys that came before me, obviously, ran their jobs a lot longer than me, and they were really good at answering all the questions that brought up. I'll see what I can do.
Mayor, can I ask a question today?
Sure.
Dave, at recent board meeting, the Electric Plan Board, discussion about the EV charging stations. What's the next move on that?
A couple of things. One, you know, I think that we would like to see the charging stations be installed. TVA has an 80/20, or they put up 80% of the money, and we would have to provide 20%. Now, a lot of that, our 20% can be, I would call it in-kind, but it's basically, you know, labor and materials that we already have in stock or labor that we're already paying. I'm also working with the state to see if there's a way to maybe secure some funds that would offset our $40,000 portion. And, you know, I'd like to talk with the city as well. One thing I can say is that we've checked with TVA, and we believe we could put something closer to the city center if we, if that were desirable, and maybe allow us to work with the city on the project and, you know, not have the 40 come out of just EPB's pocket. So, it's not, it's not a dead issue. I think that, I think that for where we were at with the board, and it was the right decision at the time. I was a little surprised, but at the same time, I think, you know, it was the right decision for where we're at at the moment. And I'm hoping we can come up with a solution, though, that to get charging stations. I would like to see them so that we have some firsthand knowledge of how people are using these stations. More than likely, it's going to be people from outside the area that would be using them, not necessarily citizens of Glasgow. And so, that's part of the justification is how do, you know, citizens of, repairers of Glasgow pay for charging stations that maybe they're not really using? You know, those are things we'll talk about and work through.
Just to follow up on that, do not the individuals who are charging their vehicle pay for charging that unit?
They certainly do. And that revenue would come to the EPB. It's really that $40,000 capital investment, yeah. So, and we're not sure, the reality is, there's no real good way right now to put together a business plan for it because we don't really have any idea of how often they're going to be used. And for me, it's a research and development-type project. You know, at some point, you've got to just jump off the cliff and see what happens. That's not a great answer when you're talking about spending, you know, some money that's not insignificant, but it's the best answer I got, you know, so.
I think the message is out, or thank you guys for putting LED lights. I think it's on Main Street, which is half I go. So, my question is, is there priority list for LED lights?
Is there a lot?
Priority list, is there? Or are we doing this block, this block?
I guess I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know how we're coming up with that list. I will check on it and let you know. Someone's got a list of what we're.
Same, like you're holding the LED lights and all the high-profile areas for the city.
You know, yeah. I mean, they're replacing lights that are already there. So, there's lighting there. And, but I think that if anyone had an area where, that they wanted to see lights changed sooner rather than later, we, I know we have all the work orders written. It's really just a matter of which ones we're doing and when.
I'd like to hear a question on the problem. Recently, I was talking to a TVA rep. Obviously, they're trying to go up in the south, get broadband. Are they going to have broadband on the TVA apartments? You know, your two stations with TVA reps are, are they going to put? Does anyone know what they're going to do today?
They already have, they have a fiber backbone, and they're going to continue to, I think, enhance with the fiber that they have. We're in really good shape already from the standpoint of our sources for our backbone. But if TVA also installs and gets somewhat into the, say, commercial wholesale, that can only help areas like us.
Because I think the guy was saying, GTA is not, two utilities of cities or communities that are trying to tap into.
Send him my, give me his name. Josh would like free. So, okay.
I'd like to, yes.
Yeah. Puskala. Puskala, accent on the first syllable, Puskala, yeah. Huh?
Puskala, is that proper?
It's Finnish. Yeah, Finnish.
Just one more thing. We spoke before the meeting started, and I had spoken with the mayor, and I think all of us here are very optimistic that soon we can get you a complete board. I know coming in, that has been a challenge for you, and I know it's been a concern for some of the employees that are there. So, hopefully, the mayor says we're on the right track to get that done.
I'll be honest, it hasn't really stressed me out at all. I'm confident that you'll get it done. You know, I'm not, I'm not concerned. And ultimately, we'll keep, we'll keep the lights on. We'll do what we need to do. But I appreciate that, though, because I would really like to have a full five-person board, just to have more lively discussions. You know, we do well with the four of us that are sitting around the table right now, but five would be, five board members and myself would be great, so.
Can I ask you a question? If I, I may have misunderstood you, but I thought you said you were, instead of where the charging stations were going to go, you're going to do something in conjunction, move them into the city?
That's, there's nothing been decided yet. What happened, Mr. Gotts, I'm not sure if you saw the, our meeting a couple of weeks ago, but we, it was on the agenda to approve a couple of charging stations, and the board decided not to approve going forward. So, it put me back to, you know, square one, kind of, to reevaluate and just to see where we're going to go.
And I'm good wherever you put them. It just, my understanding was, and what you just validated, is most of these are from out of town. And the people that came at the spot they were looking at, it was a cross-section of Cumberland Parkway, going to the lake. There's a lot of high traffic that people from out of town. The people that I talked to, they felt like that was main on main, rather than coming into town and trying to get around the square traffic and figure that out. So, but, you know, I'm good wherever you want to put it, but to your point, I think there are people not in our community. There may be 10 or 15 cars, but.
Yeah. I think that what I'm interested in is getting, however I can get the two charging stations installed, I think is good for the EPB. I think it's good for Glasgow. But we have to do it so that everyone's comfortable with making that leap. And I don't really have, you know, the full answer, but we'll work, we'll figure it out, you know. I think the decision that was made was a good one for where we're at at the moment, and we'll just have to take that into consideration and move forward. At the end of the day, we'll figure it out, so.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next, and you that's giving presentations, feel free to get up and leave. You don't want to sit through the rest of this lengthy meeting proposal. It's going to be a while. But you're all welcome to leave. But thank you for coming and presenting the information. Next item is second reading, ordinance number 2022 on ordinance, changing the name of Myrtle Street to Moran Street in the City of Glasgow.
Hey, Dave, can I make a motion that we don't have to read the whole thing again? Since it's a second reading?
You have to read it the same way by law now that it's presented. About eight months ago.
I found that out when I went to.
The last meeting, we did that, so.
She let us know with the last meeting she was at. But before we, before we get into that.
I'm sorry.
We had several phone calls that said they wished they had came, so I invited them to come tonight. And Mr. Chastity, was you brought this information?
Yes, I received a phone call on Wednesday from one of the residents asking if I would stop by and pick up the paperwork that Mona put on our tables and share that with the council. So, that is my responsibility. I spoke to the individual at that residence, and so I am only passing on her information to you all.
And I had two people said they were going to be here. I don't see either one of them here. So, is there anybody in the crowd that lives on Myrtle Street that came to participate? If not, then we'll let the city attorney read the information that they gave to Chastity, and then I will be, should be there.
We have a letter here from Lisa Taylor of 100 Myrtle Street, and it's about two-and-a-half pages, but it's large handwritten, and it won't take long to read it. And then there's a short petition that goes with it.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but before you begin, she only references, she uses the pronoun "she" with regards to a council person. I am not the individual she had that conversation with. So, I didn't want there to be any confusion about who she's referencing. So, I'm going to assume it's Mona, because we're the only.
I would like to say for the record, it does say "she." I never spoke with this, I never spoke with the lady at 100 Myrtle Street. She was not at home. I did speak with the residents.
The letters here you have in front of you, if you want to read it yourself, or he'll read the letter, or he'll read the petition, either way.
We all got it by, you know, it's morning.
Okay. Okay. Then you have the petition also being there, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And all of those is Mona.
Okay. Then if you have all that and you've read it, then I'd say we'll proceed with the second reading.
I would also like to say, just for the record, this petition, I believe Ms. Lowry picked up Wednesday. I went to everybody's house on Thursday. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Well, I got phone calls Thursday and Friday and Saturday. So, it's been well addressed, so you can read it and go on.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2022- Blank, an ordinance changing the name of Myrtle Street to Moran Street in the City of Glasgow, Comma, Kentucky. Whereas there exists a city street that runs south from Cherry Street to Kentucky Street that is called Myrtle Street and.
is called Myrtle Street. And whereas the owner of multiple parcels fronting on the street has requested that the council of the City of Glasgow rename the street to be called Moran Street. And whereas the public hearing was scheduled, advertised, and notices were sent to all property owners on Myrtle Street advising that a public hearing on the requested name change would occur in council chambers in Glasgow City Hall on Monday, April twenty-fifth at six fifteen P M., and it did occur. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section one, that Myrtle Street be and hereby is renamed Moran Street. Section two, the street begins at Cherry Street and runs south to the intersection of Kentucky Street and Lincoln Road. Section three, the Glasgow Department of Public Works Street Department shall erect signs consistent with this ordinance and the city will continue to provide maintenance to the street. Section four, the petitioner Larry Glass has offered to pay or reimburse residents of Myrtle Street with proof of receipts, their expenses to change their street name on their driver's license, social security card, and so forth, as well as loss of work with letter from their supervisor, time it takes to make these changes, and make computer, computers accessible if changes can be made online. This ordinance is to be effective immediately on publication with all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith or hereby repealed. Section six, the mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. Section seven, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, second reading, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Having heard the second reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept? Motion, Norris.
Second.
Motion by Councilperson Norris and second, the Councilperson, uh, Gottes. This being the second reading, we will call a vote, please.
Mayor Armstrong, before we vote, could I ask some questions of Mr. Glass? Or you want, do you mind to come to the podium? All right, just a couple of questions to follow up on our meeting two weeks ago. I know in that meeting, uh, you talked about speaking with the residents along Myrtle Street, the residents and also any business owners on that street. How has that gone? And then what plans are in place to assist the individuals and the businesses with the changes that they'll have to do relating to the name change?
On Friday afternoon, I decided to go door to door and talk to everyone myself. Okay? Because I heard about the petition. I thought there was some misunderstandings. I even, I was even told that one oh nine Myrtle Street was on the petition, which I happen to own that property and I didn't sign anything. So that got me a little concerned that something might be going on. So what I decided to do is go out there and talk to everybody face to face. So I started up on one hundred Myrtle Street, that is Ms. Taylor. Uh, we talked for about five to ten minutes, maybe. Uh, very defensive, obviously didn't want to talk to me, basically turned around and shut the door in my face. And so I didn't get a chance to talk to her very long, but she was very adamant about the fact she didn't want this to happen. Uh, one oh two, Mr. Ballard, I knocked on the door. I stood there fifteen minutes. Nobody ever came to the door. Uh, one oh four, Mrs. Hall, Mrs. Lori Hall, uh, she's fine with it. She said she had no issues at all. I said, is there any concerns? Do I need to do anything for you? She said, I can handle it all myself. Uh, Mrs. Lively at one oh six, I talked to her. She told me the same thing. She was fine with it. She could handle everything for herself. And I said, well, if you need any help and if we need to reimburse you, we will definitely do that. One oh eight, Mr. Smith, he's, uh, a disabled veteran, uh, does not want it to happen. Made that very, very clear. Uh, his biggest issue is he just doesn't trust anybody to help him with this process. And I said, well, what about my attorney? Can my attorney do that for you? He said, I don't trust any attorney. And I said, okay. I said, there's got to be somebody in the world that you trust. And he said, well, I do have a sister in Bowling Green that would do it for me that I trust. And so we had a good conversation, but he doesn't want it to happen. He made that very clear. But he does have somebody that can assist him. Uh, Mrs. Peggy lives in one twelve. She had a stroke four years ago. Uh, recently fell and broke her leg. She has four pins in her leg. We talked for about fifteen to twenty minutes. She's okay with it. It's a bit of an inconvenience for her, but when I assured her that we would take care of everything for her, she was fine. Uh, Mrs. Sexton, one oh four, one fourteen, made it very clear that she said, this is probably gonna happen. Uh, you're offering to help. I appreciate that because I will need the help. And she didn't have any trust issues at all. Uh, but she made it very clear she wants to sign if she possibly can get that signed. Uh, that was very, very important to her. And I think Mrs. Kirkpatrick was told the same thing. Uh, Chastity may have been told the same thing. Okay.
She called me. I told her that we couldn't give away a sign, but if it was left laying on her, what was she?
There you go. Well, she's lived there since she was eight months old. She's in her eighties now. And she's seen all the development there and she likes the development. She was very appreciative that everything that's happened over there since nineteen ninety-two. Had a really good conversation. I actually met with her again on Saturday just to confirm that, that she was okay and she was fine. One sixteen, Mrs. Jackson, uh, nice lady, loves her rose garden. Uh, I met with her two different times and we talked about her rose garden, uh, more than anything both times. Uh, Ms. Jackson has been bullied in this process. Uh, she was told that she would lose her housing if the street name was to change. And I assured Mrs. Jackson that that would not happen. I knew her son had worked for me. He ran a blacktop plant for me for years. Uh, I didn't know her husband worked for my father years ago in oil well business. Uh, so we had a really, really good conversation, but I assured her on the second visit that nothing would happen. And I told her that I was gonna report it to Sherry Lee at the Housing Authority and I had done that. Okay? Uh, and Ms. Kirk, one eighteen, not crazy about it, can live with it, provided that I'm gonna help them. And I said I would. And then they wanted to talk about joining my gym. One other thing, the Y M C A has reached out and said they would assist in this process if we wanted them to. And the bridge has reached out also and said they would assist. So I have Kim Glass here. She's my assistant. She, she received the phone call from the Y M C A and they've got it all figured out exactly what they're gonna do and how they're gonna handle it.
You said you owned the one oh nine property?
I own the one oh nine property and I didn't sign it.
Do you rent that property?
I do, and I called them and they have no idea who signed it.
Well, person on this thing you just fired by that is Courtney Scherf.
And I called Steve Jesse, who is the general manager for Ely Drugs. It's multiple divisions. And he says, Larry, we have no problem. Matter of fact, they're renewing their lease as we speak. They have no problem with the name change and they have no clue who signed it.
You've covered all bases. Thank you for doing that. It makes a lot easier process with senior members of this council that you talked to. Thank you. Any other discussion? About the roll call vote?
Honeycutt, I know he's not here, but I still have to say his name. Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Gottes?
Yes, ma'am. That's the second reading. That process will take place. You go through the problems you get and get that one back. Next item on the agenda is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two to the ordinance in City of Glasgow, authorizing adjustment in water and sewer rates about the Glasgow.
City of Glasgow Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash blank, an ordinance of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, authorizing an adjustment in water and sewer rates, excuse me, by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission, that whereas due to increasing operating expenses, aging infrastructure, and meeting increasingly stringent regulatory requirements, and whereas the Glasgow Water Company has identified current and long-term needs assessments for the system, and whereas the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission has recommended certain changes to the current water and sewer rates as evidenced by the resolution attached here to and incorporated by reference as, as Exhibit One. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City of, by the City Council as follows, by the Glasgow City Council. Section number one, upon recommendation by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission as evidenced by its resolution dated April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, this city council of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky adopts the following water and sewer rates. Section number two, the retail rates set forth below shall become effective and applied to all bills rendered by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission for retail water and sewer purchases described in the ordinance on and after council approval. Water rates to be charged for water service are changed as indicated. First two thousand gallons, minimum, inside the city limits from eight ninety-three to nine ninety-three, outside the city limits from twelve seventy-six to thirteen seventy-six. Next eighteen thousand gallons per one thousand gallons, inside the city limits, three dollars and thirty cents raised to three dollars and forty cents. Outside the city limits, four dollars and twelve cents raised to four dollars and twenty-four cents. Next eighty thousand gallons per one thousand gallons, inside the city limits, two dollars and sixty-one cents is raised to two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Three, outside the city limits, three dollars and eight cents is raised to three dollars and seventeen cents. Next nine hundred thousand gallons per one thousand gallons, raised inside the city limits from two dollars and seventeen cents to two dollars and twenty-four cents. Outside the city limits from two dollars and fifty-nine cents to two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Next one million gallons per one thousand gallons, inside the city limits, from two dollars and six cents, it's raised to two dollars and twelve cents. Outside the city limits, it's raised from two dollars and sixteen cents to two dollars and twenty-two cents. Sewer rates to be charged for water service are changed as indicated. First two thousand gallons, minimum, inside the city limits goes from eleven dollars and eighty-two cents to twelve dollars and eighty-two cents. Outside the city limits from fourteen dollars and fifty-seven cents to fifteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Over two thousand gallons per one thousand gallons goes inside the city from four eighteen to four thirty-one and outside the city from four ninety-four to five oh nine. Section number three, the Glasgow City Council further gives the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission the authority to annually increase retail water and sewer rates as follows. A, the commission is hereby granted the authority to adjust rate structures up to a three percent maximum increase annually on and after August first, two thousand and twenty-three. B, the authority granted, the commission hereby is further limited, and that the authority to set rates shall expire in five years from the date of the first rate increase as identified in section two pursuant to this ordinance, unless the city's legislative body elects to renew or extend the commission's authority to set rates prior to the end of said five-year term. Section C, the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission shall notify all its customers by mail at least thirty days before any rate increase becomes effective. Section four, the mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, second reading, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Having heard the second reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by Witcher.
Have a motion, motion by Councilmember Witcher.
Senator Kirkpatrick.
Second by Councilmember Kirkpatrick. This being the second reading, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Lowry?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Gottes?
Yes, ma'am.
Benel?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
That's the second reading passes. Uh, new business is first reading ordinance twenty twenty-two on ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty oh two dash twenty-four hundred on ordinance of the city, uh, of, of the city council of the City of Glasgow, creating the Glasgow Historic Preservation Commission. And before he reads this, it's been prepared in the summary instead of reading the whole forty pages. And that's the way we'll vote on it and then it'll be read the same way for the second vote. They'll cut down on some of it. You have the full, full, uh, uh, ordinance in front of you.
This, this ordinance is the amendment and these sections that I'm reading are the ones that have changed. And most of them have changed only slightly, uh, but you can compare it with the original you have in there to see if you want to do a more, uh, delicate examination of the changes. Uh, but this is what was recommended by the, uh, Historic Preservation Committee, Commission here. And, uh, they put a lot of work into deciding what need to be changed. And I understand, uh, that we'll have an amendment to the penalty section as soon as I've, uh, read this and there's been a motion, then there'll be an amendment to the penalty section that, uh, Mr. Benel, I think, is gonna introduce. So, uh, you can be thinking about that. City of Glasgow Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash blank, an ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty, uh, oh oh two dash twenty-four hundred, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, creating the Glasgow Historic Preservation Commission and authorizing the designation of landmarks, landmark sites, and historic districts, and the regulation of changes to landmarks and property in historic districts, and providing for penalties for the violation thereof. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that the Historic Preservation Committee is hereby recommending changes to chapter ninety-nine of the Code of Ordinances, whereas section number two oh oh two dash twenty-four hundred is hereby amended in summary as follows, colon, section number one, ninety-nine point oh two definitions, certificate of appropriateness, adding attained at no cost, page four of original document, page three of amended document. That's for the certificate of appropriateness, it can be attained at no cost. Uh, section ninety-nine point three, true, uh, approval of changes, subsection A, uh, sub one, adding, page, this is page fourteen of the original document, page ten of the amended document. And this is section A, one, sub A, activities which require a certificate of appropriateness include, but are not limited to, and this is adding subsection A through J, repair or replacement of roofs, gutters, siding, masonry, external doors and windows, trim lights, and other apparent fixtures with different materials or different design. B, removal or relocation of a building, structure, or object, or a portion thereof, including outbuildings. C, new construction or any enlargement, modification, or alteration of the exterior of an existing building, structure, or object which requires a building permit. D, removal, replacement, or enclosure of porches. E, basic alteration of materials, including installation of siding, shingles, or masonry facing. F, installation or removal of fencing or fence walls. G, installation or removal of shutters. H, removal, installation, modification, or alteration of exterior architectural features. I, exterior sandblasting, water blasting, other abrasive cleaning or chemical cleaning. And J, first time painting or permanent removal of paint. Ninety-nine point three two, approval of changes. B, C, and D remain the same, however paragraph E, F, and G have been added, page fourteen of the original document, page ten of the amended document. E, maintenance. Every person in charge of a landmark or property in a historic district shall keep it in good repair consistent with all those, uh, the state and city codes so as to preserve them against decay and deterioration. All of the exterior portions of the buildings or structures and all interior portions thereof, which if not so maintained, may cause the buildings or structures to deteriorate, to become damaged or otherwise to fall into a state of disrepair. The purpose of this provision is to prevent a person from forcing the demolition of his building by neglecting it and by permitting damage to the building because of weather or vandalism. No provision in this chapter shall be interpreted to require an owner or tenant to undertake an alteration or to restore his building to its original appearance. The provisions of this section shall be in addition to the provisions of the The provisions of this section shall be in addition to the provisions of the Kentucky Building Code requiring buildings and structures to be kept in good repair. F, new owners. Purchase of a building in the downtown historic district requires, one, communication with the Historic Preservation Commission to ensure all requirements of the Historic Preservation District are understood, and to acknowledge any outstanding business or violations with the Historic Preservation Commission, and, two, a good faith effort by the property owner to communicate with the commission regarding any proposed alterations and/or maintenance beyond that what is defined by this ordinance as ordinary. G, general maintenance includes, but is not limited to, repainting a building the same color or caulking and weather stripping. Ninety-nine point three-four, approval of changes, meetings with owners about condition of buildings. The following sentence has been added to Section H, page seventeen of the original document, page thirteen of the amended document, and this sentence was added at the end of Section H. The commission shall request a meeting with the owner of properties within a historic district that it considers to be vacant or underutilized, and the commission shall discuss with each owner ways to better utilize their property so that it might better contribute to the economic well-being and preservation of the historic district. Ninety-nine point nine-nine, penalty, this is the language that's been added. The following sentence has been added to page twenty-one of the original document, which was page fifteen of the amended document. The city shall possess a lien on the property of such a person or entity committing the violation for all fines, penalties, charges, and fees imposed pursuant to this chapter. The lien shall be superior to and have priority over all other subsequent liens on the property except state, county, school, and city taxes. Civil penalties imposed for violation of this chapter shall be enforced by and through the provisions of Chapter thirty-six regarding the code enforcement officer and code enforcement board. In Section Two, uh, standard, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Having heard the summary of this, uh, first reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Norris.
Have a motion by Councilmember Norris, and second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Neal. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Armstrong, I would like to, uh, propose, uh, three amendments, uh, to the ordinance. Uh, the first one, uh, deals with the penalty under ninety-nine point nine-nine under penalty. And I've spoken with, uh, commission members, Rhonda Troutman, uh, Tim Gooden, and Thomas Grubbs, and Tim and Thomas are in the audience, uh, tonight. Uh, under the penalty section, would like to add, uh, these words and change just two words. Uh, the, the section would read, within thirty days of notice, that's an addition, within thirty days of notice, the city shall levy, that levy changes a word there, a lien on the property of such a person or entity committing the violation of all unpaid, and unpaid would be, uh, added to this section. So we're changing, at the very first, it would say, within thirty days of notice, we're gonna, the city shall levy, and then we're gonna put unpaid in front of the word fines. The reason for this is to give a property owner a notice of thirty days after they receive a notice, in which they can work with code enforcement, uh, to take care of any issues there, and it's still, if that's not taken care of, then a, a lien will be levied on the property, and it applies to all unpaid fines. So the emphasis on it, if I'm a business owner and I had that structure in that particular area, I know it's on the unpaid fines, and normally fines should be unpaid, I understand that, but, uh, some individuals or businesses have a hard time understanding it's unpaid. So I would, uh, ask for that amendment to ninety-nine point nine-nine under penalty.
That's a question. If, if it's thirty days, if somebody is, if that's not enough time to cure the ripoff thing, and they're digging in, thirty days, you can't get the rip off, shouldn't the language be something to the effect of as long as they are progressing and trying to get it done, because thirty days, you may not be able to hit that one.
Well, the, the reason for the thirty days is to put a timeline on it, and now, and then it will go to code enforcement, the way I understand this is a code enforcement officer will handle these, it's not the commission that would handle these, and so it'd be up to code enforcement if they give them any more time based on a certain circumstance, but it needs a time period so the clock is running, so when I get that notice, I have thirty days to pay that fine, and if I do not pay that fine, then a levy will occur, however my communication, but it would be code enforcement to work if I needed an extension.
Just thirty days, not thirty days, you're not able.
Right.
No, the third, a code enforcement officer, if you show her proof that you're working on it, that she'll do it just like it's a regular code enforcement violation, she'll give you the time, or she will work with that person and say, well, if this man's gonna do it, you gotta be, and he says he's gonna do it in fifty-four days, then she'll put that in consideration, and basically there wouldn't be a addition to the fine. It'll be handled just like she does, normal, not within the historic district, but all over town.
This might be a dumb question, but can we give a list of the historic buildings in the city?
It's on the side. It's, it's on the website, you go to the website, it's got the map, shows exactly where they are.
Okay.
So that's the first amendment I would ask for.
Does the, has the commission approve those changes?
Well, you can ask, uh, Mr. Gooden, Mr. Grubbs there, Mrs. Troutman's not in the audience, but that's the three individuals that I've spoken with, yes.
Yes, we, we agree. Okay. So we need to vote on the amendment first?
Yeah, it's second on it first. You have to have a second on it first.
So we've got a motion, do I have a second on the amendment?
Second, Lowery.
Have a second by Councilmember Lowery. Now we can vote on the amendment, and then atta, if it's voted, we attach it to the original. All those in favor of the amendment signify the same eye. Those opposed, like sign. The amendment passes, now we need to go back and.
Excuse me, Mayor Armstrong, I have one more amendment, I have two more amendments I would, uh, like to the council to consider. In discussion, uh, tonight with, uh, Tim and Thomas, there are a couple items that they would like to see cleaned up, uh, in this ordinance. If you would go to page ten of the or, the actual ordinance itself, under, you'll say Chapter ninety-nine, Historic Preservation, so if you'll start with that being page one, and go to page ten, now it's gotta be Chapter ninety-nine, Historic Preservation, that's where you're gonna go to that page first, and go behind that to the tenth page.
Are you talking about the original ordinance or as amended originally?
I, I'm talking about the ordinance, uh, the amended document. The amended document is toward the back, now I have page ten at the bottom.
Page ten of this amendment. I don't see the ninety-nine on mine. Maybe I'm looking at the other.
It's, it's at the bottom, it's page ten.
Begins on page, I go through page ten, correct?
Yeah. If, if you will go down to, it's Section nine-nine point three-two, approval of changes, section, it's on page ten. It's on page ten.
Keep going, squander.
Everybody find that down at the very bottom, it's subsection E, it's after relocation, and then it's subsection E. Word begins maintenance, maintenance, every person in charge of a landmark or property, everyone see that section? In talking, um, with, uh, Tim and Thomas, that information is duplicated in other spots in the ordinance, and we could delete that section because it is duplicated.
We just didn't, upon further reading of it and, and understanding how it flowed, it's a little complicated, and so we just decided that this, if we're gonna do this, we need to do right, so we probably clean this up a little bit.
Just all of subsection E?
Delete E, and also, uh, they're asking that we delete G, that's at the top of page eleven.
Now, is the E that you're deleting on page ten the same E that's in the new amendment?
No, because that section, uh, Mr. Basil, is right above that under subsection A, is, is, is you follow down A, B, C, D.
Basic alterations of materials, just that one sentence, that you want to delete, or the whole page?
No.
Maintenance.
No, he's talking.
Under maintenance that begins, that's highlighted, that says, begins, every person in charge of a landmark or property in a historic district shall keep it in good repair.
All things deleted.
That's deleted.
Okay, but isn't, isn't that basically the same language that's in the new amendment under ninety-nine point?
No, that is the new amendment.
Yeah.
That's what, the new amendment is what we want to change.
Right. So, so you want to leave the one in on the old amendment?
Yes, it's over on the.
On page ten?
Number two, so it's already there, we just didn't see a sense of duplicating.
Okay. You're, you're leaving in the old one on page ten and dropping out the, the one on the new amendment?
No, that's, that's the E.
No, this is the old one, this is the old amended document.
Page ten?
Yeah.
Why is it highlighted?
I didn't think that was even in, it, there is a section, uh, if you go to, go over to page two, number two there, it already has the ordinary maintenance and repairs to be undertaken without.
Well, let's, 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 let's get this thing straight first on, on that language there, uh, and then we'll, we'll go get the other, but on page ten of the original amended document, you have the exact same words that you have in this section E on this new amendment. So.
Now, if, if you're looking, I, I think, Danny, if you're looking at the very top on page ten of the amended, where, where I just described E that talks about maintenance.
But that's at the bottom, that's not.
That's page, that's the one we're taking out.
You're taking it out on the old amendment?
We're taking, yes, it's gotta go, yes.
And you're gonna leave it in on the new amendment?
And what you got here, yes, will stay, uh-huh, but it's gotta come out of this.
That's, that's at the bottom of the first page.
On page ten.
We're leaving the highlighted one.
Yeah, taking it out this way.
Okay. So, so we're amending it to take it out and put it right back in as opposed to just?
No, no, I think we've got a little confusion. It's, I don't think you're seeing it in the old one, are you? You're not seeing it.
May I come back and join you a second?
That's right. You come up.
Let's all come right here, Tim. The, the other we, we want to take out is item G at the top of page eleven.
This one or that?
Well, I think we run them together, Councilman Gons, but excuse me, Mr. Basil.
This is, this is the old amendment.
No, no, that's the new one, I don't know where you got that copy, but it's.
This is the amended document that exists right now in this, in this, uh, scenario here.
I, I'm sure we ended that.
Correct. And here it is in the new one, adding.
It's a summary of the. You got, and you got the summary of it, and then you got the amended document itself. Is it before we make any amendment? It ended in D. There was none in it.
So, let me, let me tell you what you want to drop out now.
I understand your confusion, but both of your documents are the same, one, this is not in color.
This needs to go out.
Okay. Yeah, that's E.
And then, Mayor Armstrong, we want to take out, uh, G at the top of page eleven.
That was just added.
No, no, no.
No, H was added, I'm sorry, on the previous page.
Taking out G.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, and all of G?
Yes, all of G.
Okay.
He and G are.
Okay, that's E, that's E, now that I understand, I'm a little thick.
Thank you.
Is that two amendments right there?
Three amendments.
But we've already got another one. Is that, this, both additions, two amendments, or is that one?
So that, you can do that in one amendment, and your amendment would be to change the proposed amendment to delete item, oh, hang on just a second, to, to delete item ninety-nine point three-two A one E.
That's correct.
To delete ninety-nine point three-two A one E.
Correct.
And A one G.
Correct.
And that's all it needs.
We do apologize.
Oh, listen, it, it's really my misunderstanding as to all that had happened in the past and when it had happened.
So you have a motion to the amendment that he just read, and a second to the amendment that he just read, and we had an approval, but we did not have all this in there, so we need to get a vote to amend these three sections.
Well, these two sections, because we've already amended one.
Okay. But they're all in one amendment?
No, no, we've already done one amendment, and the, the amendment is, is already amended once, and now we're amending it again.
We got a first and a second to the second amendment.
Yeah.
All those in favor, signify the same eye. Opposed, like sign.
Then, Mayor Armstrong, I have one more amendment, it's gonna be amendment number three on this.
Move me back to the next one.
No, no. Now, we're moving forward, we're moving forward, no, the second one was, there were two in there, it's just one now, okay, but anyway.
Same E.
We're going to page eleven, if you go to page eleven, and you write at page eleven, and you see F there at the top of page eleven, F, everybody see that on page, all right? Uh, in talking to commission members, we would like to move that to page fifteen, like to move that to page fifteen, and we would call that, that would be letter N. It just needs to be clarified, needs to be in another section of the ordinance.
What page should we move it, what page should we?
Well, we're, we're gonna move it to page fifteen, now the, the page numbers may change, but we're taking F from page eleven and moving it to page fifteen and calling it N under actual work, actual work.
Okay.
I better find the section.
Right above ordinance twenty-four-hundred, pass one twenty-two.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor, yes.
It's still under ninety-nine point three-two, approval of changes.
Yes, yes, sir.
And it's still, um, it becomes a, a major section, now instead of a subsection, it becomes section N.
Correct, that's the way.
So it's deleted as, um, it's deleted as subsection ninety-nine point three-two A one F, it's deleted as ninety-nine point three-two A one F, and replaced as ninety-nine point three-two N.
Correct.
With the same language.
Yes, sir.
That works, that's easy.
We have a motion from Benel, and a second from, second from Capatrick, all those approved, signify the same, uh, signify, uh, I, all those opposed, like sign.
All right, and just want to say, appreciate the council's patience with that, and the city attorney's patience, and the mayor's, and appreciate you guys, you're here to put in that.
Vote on the amendments?
As amended.
As amended. All those.
I've got, I got one thing on the whole ordinance, it's a whole, uh, in the past, I voted against, um, the penalty clause for these two other ordinance, the dog one, the grass sweep in the city, and, uh, I'll be voting no, because I realize we need some kind of enforcement, but I have an issue with.
Now, was that in this, in this document?
No, no, it's not in this document, for the whole document, the penalty clause is in, you know, all of the wording in the penalty clause, I voted no on a couple other ordinance, so I'd be probably against my own spirit to vote yes for it, so I'm just saying I'm gonna be, that's why I'm voting no, is because I voted no on the penalty part.
Of, of those of ordinance, not this document.
Yes.
Whatever, folks, you vote. All right. Now that that's done, uh, let's get back to sensible. Uh, first reading of, uh, of ordinance twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance enacting and adopting supplement twenty-twenty-two S-five-two to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash blank, an ordinance enacting and adopting supplement twenty-twenty-two S-five-two to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the twenty-twenty-two S-five-two supplement to the Code of Ordinances, Exhibit A of the City of Glasgow, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Code of Ordinances of this municipality, and, whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the Code of Ordinances, which are based on or make reference to sections of the Kentucky revised statutes, and whereas it is the intent of council to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the Law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky. Section one, that the two thousand twenty-two S-five-two supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, and is attached here to its Exhibit A, will be and the same is hereby adopted by reference as F set out in its entirety. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage, approval, and publication as required by law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Didn't I do a good job?
Having heard this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion by Benel.
Do you think I did a good job?
Motion by Benel, and a second by Lowry, all those approved, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. That one has passed first reading. Our next item is first reading, ordinance twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance relating to amendment of the rules and regulations affecting collection of garbage in the City of Glasgow, Kentucky.
Here we go.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash blank, an ordinance relating to amendment of the rules and regulations affecting collection of garbage in the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, this amendment updates rates in ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash twenty-nine forty-one dated September ninth, two thousand nineteen, whereas the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, due to changing circumstances and conditions, does now require an amendment to their garbage collection rules and regulations. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow, the amendments to the rules and regulations are as follows. Section number one, fifty-point-one-six, garbage collection mandatory, garbage collection by the city sanitation department shall be mandatory at all residential units within the city limits. Section two, fifty-seventeen, container specifications, it, A, it shall be the duty of owners, tenants, or persons in charge of every building, house, store, manufacturing establishment, office building, or other buildings in the city to place or cause to be placed all garbage and refuse accumulated on the premises in official City of Glasgow roll dumpsters, or it will not be collected. B, carts must be at your curb no later than seven a.m. the day of your collection, and no earlier than six p.m. the night before. Trash that's been disturbed by wind or animals is considered litter, and will not be picked up by the city, it's responsibility of the occupant, there shall be no household garbage in plastic bags outside the cart. Do not overload the cart, maximum load of two hundred pounds, this will cause unnecessary damage to the carts. Do not place hot ashes, paint, solvents, oil liquids of any kind, hot charcoal, batteries, hazardous waste, construction debris, auto parts, junk items, dirt rocks, or any other items not normally found in household waste in the cart. Do not put your yard waste in the cart, the cart must be kept clean to comply with health and sanitation requirements, wash the cart periodically with detergent and water, keep the lid on the cart closed at all times except to place garbage in the cart, this will prevent water from entering and placing unnecessary weight on the cart, it'll also prevent trash from blowing out, the entry of insects, and the entry of animals, do not let children play in or with the cart. Location of containers for collection, carts must be positioned at the edge of the curb or at least three feet away from other carts, walls, buildings, poles, do not block sidewalks. Section fifty-point-nine, one, fifty-point-one-nine is deleted, fifty-point-two O, rates for garbage collection and discount, the monthly minimum rates for collection of garbage hauled in city packers are as follows, A, residents, apartments, and mobile homes, each unit, um, eight dollars for the people entitled to a discount, it's going to ten dollars, twelve dollars for non-discounted rates, it's going to fourteen, business and commercial, previously fifteen dollars, is now going to nineteen dollars. I understand it had been raised to seventeen previously, so that there's actually just a two-dollar raise, but the official rate had been fifteen, it's now nineteen. Uh, additional city issued roll dumpster, uh, had previously been five dollars, and it'll now be seven dollars. All persons claiming the discount shall honor before the first day of the birth month of each year, complete and file with the City, Glasgow City Hall Administrative Clerk on a form prescribed and made available by the Administrative Clerk, the claim for discount provided in this division, the claim shall be effective for the twelve-month period following the first day of the birth month of each year. New garbage collection customers during such twelve-month period, and persons attained the age of sixty-five years or becoming disabled during the twelve-month period may make the claim for discount after the first day of the birth month of each year. Section number six, sections fifty, twenty-one, B and E are deleted. Disposal of garbage and refuse at the landfill, Glasgow Regional Landfield, all customers of the landfill shall receive a numbered receipt for payment, whether paid by cash, card, check, or monthly billing, the receipt shall include date, name of commercial hauler and/or individual, time of day, weight, origin, and type of garbage and refuse. This is the table of rates, waste generated from residential sources, if it comes from within the city, it'll be two dollars and a half per one hundred pounds, it had previously been a dollar thirty, subject to a minimum charge of twenty dollars per load, which had previously been nine dollars per load. Other origin where a written contract has been approved by the mayor, previously it was one dollar, one dollar thirty per hundred pounds, subject to a minimum charge of thirteen fifty per load, now it's two fifty per hundred pounds, subject to twenty dollars minimum charge per load. All other origins where no written contract has been approved by the mayor, had been dollar fifty-five per hundred pounds, subject to thirteen fifty per load minimum, it's now two fifty per hundred pounds, subject to a minimum charge of twenty dollars per load. Previously for waste generated from commercial or industrial source, uh, it had previously followed under categories from a dollar thirty per hundred pounds and three sixty per cubic yard, with minimums of nine dollars per load up to thirteen fifty per load, that's all changed into one category now, and that's waste generated from commercial or industrial source, it is two fifty per hundred pounds, or seven twenty per cubic yard, if it's shredded or chipped, or fourteen fifty, or fourteen forty per cubic yard, if it's not shredded or chipped, whichever is higher, subject to a minimum charge of twenty dollars per load. The effective date of rate change is listed in Section Five and Section Eight, shall be July first, two thousand twenty-two, any provisions not specifically altered herein remain as they appear in other Glasgow ordinances. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Mona Simmons, City Clerk, first reading, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Having heard the reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, Norris.
Motion from Councilmember Norris, the second, which, Councilmember Witcher, all those approved, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, resolution passes. Having no other business, we have some announcements, our next scheduled city council meeting is Monday, May the twenty-third, at, uh, twenty-twenty-two at seven p.m., in person here at the city, uh, council chambers, we will have a town hall meeting, Monday, June the sixth, twenty-twenty-two at five-thirty, here in the council chambers, all the councilmen are urged to attend, and, uh, if there's no other announcements, I'd like to thank all the council members, everybody here in the crowd, for hanging in for this lengthy meeting and getting through, thank y'all so much for your time, and if I have no other announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I'll have the council member, the second, the council member, the last one. Thank y'all so much.